Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation from Pastor Dr. M. L. Jimmison of St. John Missionary Baptist Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Adalina Gilbert of Girl Scouts Troop 517. Please stand.
Let us pray. Today, oh Lord, do we gather with an attitude of gratitude for the grace and favor you have allotted. We thank you for these men and women, elected servants, entrusted stewards, who navigate the affairs of this much beloved community in which we live. We pray today that you will provide for them the wisdom, the insight, and the compassion, coupled with the concern for all, particularly those who are the least, the last, the lost, and the disenfranchised among us. May these proceedings produce today tangible, beneficial results in real time. We love you, we thank you, and we ask all of this today. In your strong name, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Adalina. Well, I call this regular meeting of the City Council to order. Item three is Office of the Mayor, and we do have a few presentations, and I will make my way to the front for that. Okay, why don't we have our Bike Month folks come forward? Can you just spread yourselves out here? So, May is National Bike Month, and to learn a little bit more about that, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, May is National Bike Month promoted by the League of American Bicyclists and celebrated in communities across the country. And whereas, National Bike to Work Day is Friday, May 20th, and the City of Oklahoma City Association of Central Oklahoma Governments and Downtown OKC Partnership are hosting annual rides to downtown. And whereas, the inaugural Bike Fest event held on May 1st was a family-friendly festival designed to celebrate the benefits of bicycling for fun, fitness, and transportation. And whereas, the City of Oklahoma City, ACOG, Downtown OKC Partnership, M.B.A.R.C., local bicycling organizations, and bicycle shops throughout Oklahoma City are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas, the bicycle is a healthy, convenient, economical, enjoyable, and environmentally friendly form of transportation and recreation. And whereas, creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve residents' health, well-being, quality of life, community spirit, and safety, and to reduce pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on roads. And whereas, the ongoing implementation of Bike Walk OKC, the comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian plan of Oklahoma City, will create a citywide bicycle network that can be used by riders of all ages and abilities. And whereas, the City of Oklahoma City has secured tens of millions of dollars toward providing bicycle and trail infrastructure through the Better Street Safer City Program, multiple federal grants, and the MAPS4 Initiative. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 to be Bike Month in Oklahoma City.
Thank you, Amy, and we have a great group here this morning, and they all nominated Max to be the spokesperson. So, if you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for all your support. We're fortunate to have great bike advocates here in the City of Oklahoma City, helping to make cycling safer, more convenient, and more comfortable in the city. One plug, Bike to Work Day is on May 20th, I believe, from 7:45 to 8:00 a.m. At Bicentennial Park, we'll have free coffee, courtesy of Junction Coffee, compliments of Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership, and thanks to our friends at ACOG for helping to put that together, too. So, hope to see you there, and happy Bike Month.
Excellent. And I told you in my office that occasionally Councilman Cooper will put his helmet on the dais, and he has risen to the occasion today. So, well, thank you so much. Let's hear it for our bicycle community. Okay, let's bring up Building Safety Month. Some of our OKC colleagues here today to recognize Building Safety Month, and to learn a little bit more about that, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, the City of Oklahoma City is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas, our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action," the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all our benefit. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Building Safety Month in Oklahoma City.
Thank you so much. You know, it's easy to forget that the creation of buildings of this magnitude, like we do with such a common practice now, is really relatively recent phenomenon in world history. And there was a good reason that it took so long. We had to figure out how to make it safe, and to make sure that it would be sustainable. So, we're so appreciative of our team here at the City of Oklahoma City that makes sure that all of these buildings in Oklahoma City stay exactly in the way they're supposed to, and that everybody is safe. And to hear a little bit more about what they do, we have David here this morning, who also was nominated by his group as the spokesperson.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time this morning, and taking the time to make a proclamation on something so important as Building Safety Month. And it is something special for the month of May, but it really is our duty to make sure buildings are safe every day. And today, I did bring some people with me. Mike Miller, he's our Superintendent of Inspections. Malia is one of our supervisors over our permit section, and Scott is our Plan Review Supervisor, and that's the Development Center, what makes up the Development Center. And that's what we try to do, is make sure all the buildings are built safe. We're really a different branch of what we would call public safety, and it's to make sure that people don't think about going in buildings and know that they're safe, or they push a button on the elevator and it takes them where they're going, not thinking about, is it safe when they get in the elevator? So, that's our job, and we like doing that job. So, thank you.
Well, we're glad you like it, and we like you. So, let's show our appreciation. All right, let's bring up EMS Week. We're joined by our partners from EMSA today to recognize this important week, and to learn a little bit more about it, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, National EMS Week is celebrated across the nation the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022. And whereas, EMSA is currently Oklahoma's largest provider of pre-hospital emergency medical care, serving all citizens of Oklahoma City since 1990. And whereas, EMSA employs more than 300 emergency medical technicians, paramedics, and support staff in Oklahoma City. And whereas, EMSA medics were heroes on the front line responding to the COVID-19 pandemic for more than two years. And whereas, the men and women of EMSA reduce pain and suffering by providing superior and compassionate service to those in need. And whereas, EMSA's highly-trained emergency medical professionals answer the call to duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And whereas, EMSA has a critical role in trauma system management, continuing healthcare provider education, community preparedness, and disaster and pandemic response initiatives. And whereas, EMSA is an international leader in cost efficiency, clinical quality, and technology utilization and development, serving as an example for EMS systems in the United States and around the world. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim May 15th through 21st, 2022 to be EMS Week in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. And one thing that was mentioned is certainly worth highlighting again, and that is the role that the men and women of EMSA played in the pandemic. You were definitely first responders, and especially in those early months, you were being put into, you know, situations that we didn't understand, and we were all hiding in our houses, and you had to go out and be in places that we were actively telling people not to be. And we understood that you had to do that. But along with fire and police and other first responders, you didn't have the luxury of sheltering in place. So, thank you so much for your work in that time and all times. Frank, I believe you've been nominated by this group to say a few words, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the over 300 EMS personnel here in Oklahoma City, both EMTs, paramedics, fleet technicians, vehicle supply technicians, billers, administrators, HR people, safety and risk people, you name it, and over 600 people that work with EMSA statewide, we would like to thank the city very much for this proclamation, and really lift up and praise our EMTs and paramedics and the rest of the crew that are out there working for this community every day, saving lives, holding someone's hand when they're scared, and in general, trying to do good in the world.
Indeed. Well said. Let's hear it for our EMSA team. Okay, and finally, Don Stevens, our Teacher of the Month. Please join me up here. Don, we'd like to learn a little bit more about you and your work at Southeast High School, and so I will ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas, Don V. Stevens III has been named Teacher of the Month for May 2022 by the Foundation of Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas, Don received a bachelor's degree in telecommunications from Oklahoma Baptist University, and has taught at Southeast High School as a career and technical education teacher for grades nine through 12 for five years. And whereas, Don began his career in education in 2017 after 22 years as a film and video entrepreneur. He has provided local and regional video production training and served as an adjunct professor. And whereas, Don has implemented a film and video curriculum at Southeast High School, and incorporates real-world concepts and basic life skills training for his students. His lessons often include elements of their school as subjects of the videography from sporting events to poetry competitions. And whereas, Don believes that outstanding teachers provide students with a safe environment in which to explore opportunities. Don strives to improve his own teaching skills and offers assistance to others. And whereas, Don seeks out opportunities to collaborate with his peers, and is an advocate for working adults becoming teachers as a second career, seeing it as a way to give back to his community. He impacts his students in the community in positive ways through his volunteer involvement with the Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club of Greater Oklahoma City, the Not Alone Project Board of Directors, and the Oklahoma City Film Row Inaugural Board of Directors. He is an active member of his church and has served in many volunteer positions. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City, that they do hereby recognize and commend Don V. Stevens III on his selection as May 2022 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Well, Don, as you likely very well know, we have a fast-growing film industry in Oklahoma City, and one thing we talk about a lot is we've got to create a workforce to catch up to this demand, and little did we know, you are on it. And you are obviously training our future filmmakers, and also, I'm sure, impacting lives in a broader way than that as well. So, thank you so much for what you do for the kids of Oklahoma City. We're very grateful for it, and we'd love to hear a few words from you, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for this recognition. Thank you to the Foundation and the Rotary Club for the nomination. I do teach. It was not my first plan, but after a couple decades of being an entrepreneur, I decided to look at high school education. And I see the future of Oklahoma City every day, and I can tell you that the future is bright. And I do encourage anyone looking to give back to their community to consider teaching as a second career. Thank you so much.
Very cool. And this is a resolution, so let's make sure and pass this. If we want to bring up, there we go, a motion and a second, and cast your votes, and I would like to vote aye. And it passes unanimously. Let's show our appreciation to Don. All right, the rest I'll do from my seat. So, now we're at item 3B, Resolution of Gratitude to All Who Have Served in the USS Oklahoma City. So, for nearly four decades and most of my life, there's been a submarine out there in the world known as the USS Oklahoma City. But as was always inevitable, its mission is coming to an end this year. Commander was here a few weeks ago. He ran a relay in the Oklahoma City Memorial Marathon, and though his time in command of the USS Oklahoma City will be short, he has worked to have a bond with the city, and many of his predecessors did as well. But there's only been one honorary commander all these years. I'd say that is Debbie Martin, and she has worked very hard, as long as I've been around City Hall, to make sure that we have a connection to the USS Oklahoma City. And she worked with Steve Hill to draft a resolution of gratitude, which I think is most appropriate. And Councilman Stonecypher and others will carry this resolution to the ceremony that is going to be held a little later this month, as the mission of the USS Oklahoma City comes to an end. I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas, the nuclear-powered attack submarine USS Oklahoma City is the 38th ship of the Los Angeles-class submarines, which follow a long naval tradition of naming ships after cities. The namesake program establishes a relationship and builds a bond between the city and crew during the life of the ship. And whereas, the contract to build it was awarded to Newport News Shipbuilding and Dry Dock Company on August 13, 1981. It was launched November 2nd, 1985, and commissioned July 9th, 1988, with Commander Kevin John Reardon in command. And whereas, the Oklahoma City deployed to the Mediterranean in March 1990 with the USS Eisenhower Battle Group, and participated in Operation Desert Shield. It received the Sixth Fleet Hookem Award for Anti-Submarine Warfare Excellence, and was awarded the Meritorious Unit Citation. And whereas, the Oklahoma City won the 1990 and 1991 Battle Efficiency E from Commander, Submarine Squadron Eight, for overall excellence in submarine operation. The sub also won the 1990 Engineering E for Engineering Excellence, and the Marjorie Starrett Battleship Fund Award for the Atlantic Fleet in 1991. And whereas, following a second Mediterranean deployment with the USS Eisenhower Battle Group in 1991, the sub returned home where it spent a year backfitting the Navy's most advanced sonar and fire control system. The Oklahoma City tested the state-of-the-art combat system from 1993 to 1995. The two-year testing program was an unprecedented success on time and on budget. And whereas, the Oklahoma City returned to Norfolk, Virginia, after a six-month deployment in support of the War on Terrorism on January 20, 2005. The Oklahoma City transited to its patrol area in the Pacific Ocean via the Arctic Ocean, the first such transit for a second flight Los Angeles-class submarine. After the patrol, it became the first submarine to circumnavigate North America by transiting back to the Atlantic Ocean through the Panama Canal and returning to its home port in Norfolk. And whereas, in 2007, the Oklahoma City became the first submarine to shift from traditional paper navigation to an all-electronic navigation suite. This marked the first significant shift in U.S. Navy navigation practices since the introduction of the Global Positioning System in the 1990s. And whereas, from May to November 2007, the Oklahoma City completed a deployment to the Persian Gulf in support of the War on Terror. It spent May to July 2008 in the Eastern Pacific in support of the War on Drugs, and was responsible for seizing more than 11 metric tons of cocaine valued at more than $1.5 billion. And whereas, after a 26-month overhaul, the sub was forward-deployed to Guam in March 2011. And whereas, the Oklahoma City arrived at Puget Sound Naval Shipyard on November 22nd, 2021, to start her months-long inactivation and decommissioning process. And whereas, the commanders of the USS Oklahoma City include Joseph Crawl, Kevin Reardon, James Holloway, Philip M. Polphron, Richard L. Snead, John G. Cook, James Foggo, Richard Voder, Ron LaSalvia, Gordon C. Williams, Ed Mayer IV, Aaron M. Thyme, Andrew Peterson, Michael Connor, Patrick Friedman, Thomas P. O'Donnell, Stephen Lawrence, and Sean Welch, each providing unparalleled leadership and unique and notable achievement to the command. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend the USS Oklahoma City and her commanders and crews for having represented the city, state, and nation with uncommon bravery and honor. We further express our gratitude to all who have served on the USS Oklahoma City, and we thank them for their service as the submarine's mission comes to its conclusion.
Thank you very much. I know that was a lot, but I think it was important that we hear it. And it's been an incredible story and one we're honored to have been connected with. With that, we could take a motion to adopt this resolution. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And Mark and whoever else is going, obviously, you'll be able to carry our sincere best wishes with you when you go to Washington State later this month.
Actually, it'll be myself and councilperson Carter.
Oh, okay. Are you not going, Mark? Okay, great. Good to know. We also now have item 3C, which is a resolution approving travel expenses for me to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors Annual Meeting in Reno coming up in June. Are we spinning? Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the required six affirmative votes. And finally, we have appointments to Bond Advisory, Park Commission, and Planning Commission, items 3, D, E, and F. We could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That concludes office of the mayor. And now we can move on to item 4, items from council. And we have item 4A, which is an ordinance on final hearing relating to motor vehicles and traffic. This is in regards to, well, Councilmember Cooper and Hammond, why don't you just summarize? You'll do it better than I would. I remember this, but this is the third and final meeting and potential adoption.
Yeah, this would essentially, as we presented before, just bring city code into harmony with the state law that was passed last year to essentially legalize the Idaho Stop in Oklahoma City. And it feels right that we might be doing this during Bike Month. So yeah, I will move for approval. I don't know, councilmember, if you have anything to say.
Yeah, I would only add, for anybody who likes peer-reviewed research on any topic, you might do a Google search for Kent Law and Idaho Stop. Idaho in 1982 was the first state to pass such a law. And I'll just read briefly from it. "In Idaho," keep in mind this is 40 years ago, "in Idaho, the apparent effect of the Idaho Stop legislation has been neutral to good. In areas with high density that are, quote, 'more congested,' the law's effect is neutral because, quote, 'heavier cross-traffic volumes,' end quote, require that cyclist stop at stop signs. In areas with lower traffic volumes, in contrast, the law's result is more positive. According to Brian Shea of the Idaho Transportation Department, the general consensus among stakeholders such as transportation officials, urban planning staffs, law enforcement, and bicycle advocacy groups is that the law has helped to facilitate the ease and convenience of cycling without causing any risk to the cyclist or increasing the number of crashes. Consequently, there is little thought of repealing the law in Idaho. Moreover, bicyclist fatalities arguably provide another way to measure the Idaho Stop Rule's implication for safety. Though not the lowest, the fatalities in Idaho fall squarely at the bottom and under the national average." So as someone who literally, I don't bike all the time because I teach, you know, part-time in Edmund, and it's not so fun. The phone gets it. It's not so fun sometimes to bike from the Passo all the way to Edmund, so I don't do that. But it's really fun and helpful and healthy to bike from Passo on Walker to 200 North Walker. It's a really lovely ride to bike through the neighborhood of Mansions and Mesa Park and Midtown and the bungalows in Jefferson Park. And so I just think this is a way to make it safer for
Okay. Well, if there's no other comment, no one has signed up to speak, so we could go ahead and entertain a motion. Are we waiting for this to be responsive again? There we go. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 4B. This is an ordinance to be introduced and adopted with an emergency. This is the extension of a moratorium we have passed before. It extends this 725-day moratorium to a 905-day moratorium on the acceptance of new applications for PUDs and SPUDs that allow construction of freestanding signs as described here. Councilman Stonecypher.
Thank you. The last couple of years, we've been working on establishing a new sign code through the help of staff, legal division, input from the business community and from the sign companies. I know Todd Stone's been really active in helping bring this about. But one of the things that came up during the period of time that we were looking at this amendment to the code was we needed a moratorium to be in place to deal with certain large freestanding signs that were being approved through the use of PUDs and SPUDs. And we were all prepared to move forward with the ordinance. And then the United States Supreme Court decided on April 21st, a couple of weeks ago, to come out with a new decision called the City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising. It upholds Reed versus the town of Gilbert, which is a 2015 Supreme Court decision. All that being said, we need to look a little bit more at the new law that was adopted just a couple of weeks ago and make sure our new sign code complies with that law. So we're asking that the moratorium be extended, and we're also asking that it be adopted with an emergency. And if there's no questions, I'd move for that extension at this time.
This will be two votes. The first is for the ordinance. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now I assume you would like to make a motion for the emergency. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the seven required affirmative votes. All right, that concludes items from council. And now we're at item 5, city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, in addition to the claims and payroll, we have three reports on today. The first is the interim financial report. And just want to point out, it does have other funds in there, but obviously, we emphasize the general fund being our largest operating fund. It shows the gap between revenues and expenditures through the first three quarters as $43 million. So revenues are $43 million above expenditures. Part of that, a significant portion of that, is the growth that we've had in sales and use tax and what's reflected in the budget amendment. But I just wanted to point that out. But if you go back to the back page, there are additional funds that are highlighted there where we monitor those funds and look at the revenues and expenditures on those funds. So if there's any questions on this report, I'm glad to give additional information. We also have the quarterly investment report. Don't typically make a presentation on this, but just want to acknowledge the work the treasurer's office does to make sure that they're investing our funds in a way that protects those funds. It's a significant portfolio. You'll see it's about $1.8 billion, includes city funds as well as other trust funds and bond funds. So just wanted to recognize that. And then the hotel motel tax report is on. On hotel tax collections continue to be very strong. It's 56% above last year, which we were still coming out of the pandemic. I asked them about looking back to 2019 was our last normal year. We're about 5.5% above that. So if you look from 2019 to 22, it's below what our normal growth would have been during that time, but at least we're back up above where we were in 2019. So really strong growth in hotel tax and glad to see that. And that's all that I have.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, item 6, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 7, requests for uncontested continuances. On the agenda, we have listed item 11J that is going to be deferred to June 7. What else might we have, Mr. City Manager?
We have several items beginning on page 13. Item 11A, the applicant has requested that we defer this item to June 7. It's PC 10770. Then on page 15, item 11P, we are going to strike this item. This is the sign ordinance. We are introducing the sign ordinance. We need to go back and do some additional work on this and do some additional review. So we're going to strike this, and we'll bring that back in the next few weeks. Then if you go to page 16, on dilapidated structures, item 11Q1, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item C, 2415 South Broadway Avenue, the owner is removed. Item H, 5512 Spitz Drive, we're going to re-notify the owner for property maintenance on this property. And then on item P, 808 Northwest 116th Terrace, to re-notify the owner. On page 17, item 11R1, unsecured structures, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 908 North Bradley Avenue, the owner is secured. Item F, 2105 North McKinley Avenue, the owner is secured. Item I, 9313 South Lake Drive, the owner is secured. Item K, 8505 Northwest Minster Drive, the owner is secured. Item L, 12241 Woodland Hills Drive, the owner is secured. Item N, 1312 Northwest 8th Street, the owner is secured. Item Q, 749 Southeast 11th Street, the owner is secured. Item T, 1508 Northeast 16th Terrace, the owner is secured. Item Y, 2620 Southwest 38th Street, to re-notify for dilapidated. And then item AA, 325 Southeast 42nd Street, the owner is secured. On page 18, item 11S1, abandoned buildings, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item A, 908 North Bradley Avenue, the owner is secured. Item B, 2415 South Broadway Avenue, the owner is secured. Item G, 5512 Spitz Drive, to re-notify for property maintenance. Item I, 8505 Northwest Minster Road, the owner is secured. Item J, 12241 Woodland Hills Drive, the owner is secured. Item O, 325 Southeast 42nd Street, the owner has secured. And item T, 808 Northwest 116th Terrace, to re-notify the owner. That's all the items that I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Item 8, revocable permits and events. Item 8A is a memo of understanding with Mobility Worldwide for the Mobility Worldwide Walk and Roll 5K. And we do have Max Wilson who has signed up to speak.
Well, I'm Max Wilson, and I'm the kind of the go-to guy for the walk and roll. And our Parks Department was so kind to allow us to have our celebration for the walk and roll. Walk and roll has to do with Mobility Worldwide. I like the invocation this morning. It said, "The attitude of gratitude." I like that. So what I'm thinking is, we all might have a little better attitude of gratitude if we focused on the opportunities and blessings of mobility. MobilityWorldwide.org, I would suggest you might go on to the website, MobilityWorldwide.org, and your attitude of gratitude might improve immensely because we have 70 million people in the world that actually crawl in the dirt on a daily basis from things in third-world countries such as polio, leprosy, MRSA, landmine injuries to the lower extremities, those kinds of things that damage lower extremities after birth. And we also have lots of birth defects due to bad water, things like that. So we have a lot of people crawling, 70 million. That astounded me when I first saw that number. We at Mobility Worldwide are trying to help that plight. We have built since 2004. This is a nationwide effort. We're in 102 countries, and we have built over 60,000 what we call mobility carts. They're off-the-road wheelchairs. And they're not like these wheelchairs. They're wooden, they're elevated, there's places for storage, and we can actually transport items that will allow people that have no mobility crawling on the ground in hamlets and villages that are off the grid. You can't find them. So we go to these different countries, we find these people that are off the grid, we give them these mobility carts that we built. And again, if you go to the website, you'll see what I'm talking about. They're little wooden carts, they're fairly sizable, and it allows them to just be productive again. So we're having a fundraiser. Mobility Worldwide is a 501(c)(3). It's all donation, it's completely volunteer. So we just thank you for the opportunity to work with the Parks Department at the Route 66 Park and kind of west of Lake Overholster. And we're going to have a celebration there this Saturday. And it will be from 10:30 to 2:30. And we're going to have a little fishing derby, and we're going to have a walk and roll. And we're going to have a little softball game. There'll be food trucks, all kinds of wonderful things going on. We just invite everyone to come out and enjoy the opportunity and kind of have an attitude adjustment when we donate and love our fellow men worldwide. And I just thank you for that opportunity. Chris Hamilton has been really a great help. It was his idea to use Route 66 Park. Kudos, is the only park in Oklahoma City that's fully accessible to wheelchairs or any disabilities or what we call any ability. So I just like to thank you guys, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
That's it.
Thank you. Love it, love it. Yeah. Love your passion, Councilman Carter.
As he was talking, I was just going through their website, looking at the different cards and doing things. It looks really interesting. I move for approval. I'm excited to see what they do Saturday, so.
Great. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great event. Thank you. Okay, item 8B is a revocable permit with the American Heart Association for the 2022 Central Oklahoma Heart Walk, June 3 through the 4th at Bicentennial Park. And Jill Geier has signed up to speak.
Yes, hi.
Go ahead.
So we're having the heart walk on June 4, 2022 at Bicentennial Park. This is our first year back since 2019 due to COVID. We're very excited. There is a three-mile and a one-mile route that goes around downtown. It's just a fun walk, so it's not timed. And we'll have a lot of different vendors there, sponsors will be there, and we're anticipating around 5,000 people.
Okay. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, it sounds, yeah, it sounds like a great event. I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
For some reason, I cannot vote, but I vote yes.
Okay, how would you like to vote? You'd like to vote aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, 8C is a revocable permit with the Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership for Downtown Employee Appreciation Day at Kerr Park on May 24. And we have Danielle Dotson here.
Hi, good morning. So Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership is really excited to bring back Downtown Employee Appreciation Day. It's going to be May 24 from 11 until 2. We're so excited to have downtown employees back. We were back last year in August, but this year we're coming back to May to make it a little bit cooler for everyone. We'll have live music and then about eight different food trucks and some free treats. So Wonder Band Pops will be there, so free popsicles to cool off. And then a lot of our different services in downtown will be popped up, like Spokys, Mary Gardens, so downtown employees can learn about those different services. so downtown employees can learn about those different services.
Sounds great. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, I know I've enjoyed this event in the past as a downtown employee. And specifically, there was one year that you all had adoptions for dogs, and that inspired me to go adopt a dog. So I will move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 8D is a revocable permit with Pop-Up Entertainment and Events Group for the OKC Pop-Up Series Here Comes Summer Festival, June 11th through 12th, at Wiley Post Park. And I see that we'll have a similar permit for item E, but we'll stick with D for now. And we have Laura McNeil?
McNett.
McNett, sorry.
Good morning, thank you. I am here to seek approval for two permits for festivals that are part of the OKC Pop-Up Series. We have a June event planned at Wiley Post Park called Here Comes Summer. We'll have food trucks, pop-up shops, activities, demos, classes, those types of things. Lots of outdoor, enjoying summer. And then, do you want me to speak about the?
Well, why don't we handle that one real quick? Because we're going to have to have separate votes. Councilwoman Hammond, you want to move on this first one?
Yeah, I'll move for the approval of item D.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then item E is a revocable permit with Pop-Up Entertainment and Events Group for the OKC Pop-Up Series Sounds of the City Music Festival in July at Wiley Post Park. Tell us about that.
Sure. It again will just be another festival of the series, but with an emphasis on music. And so our demonstrations and our classes and our hands-on activities will involve more with music, and we will have live music as well.
Very neat. Well, and we're excited that you're able to take advantage of all the new improvements at Wiley Post Park. So I will move for approval.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
It says, "Yanni."
Okay, so you'd like to vote aye. And we're also seeing to be hung up on Councilwoman Young. How would you like to vote? Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Have a great event. Okay, item 8F is revocable right-of-way use permit with Red Coyote Running and Fitness. Road Runners Club of America sanctioned all the Red Coyote Run Toberfest 5K on October 2nd. That's getting ahead of the game, I respect that. At West Park Place between North Walker and North Hudson. And we have John Oslund here to speak.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This will be the 11th year of the Run Toberfest. Our seventh, and at that location in Midtown, in cooperation with Fassler Hall. Run Toberfest 5K is a culmination event of our 5K beginner training program in the fall, a celebration of fall and fitness. The route starts and finishes there on Park Place, runs up Walker and takes a loop through Heritage Hill before returning back to the home base. We're pleased to appear and answer any questions. Thank you for your support, and invite you guys to join us.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through K, we can take with one motion.
I would be interested in going into executive session on items I and J. To learn more about those.
All right, we'll need to take votes on, I guess, both of those items to go into executive sessions. So we'll be availing ourselves of I2 and J2. So let's take a motion on those. And then we'll need to actually do the session since we're in MFA right now. All right, we have a motion and a second for I2. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then let's do one for J2 as well. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And so now we will retire to an executive session, and we will return.
Okay, we are back from executive session. We are still convening as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and we can now consider items A through K. We could approve them with one motion if that's the council's desire. We'll have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through D we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OC PPA and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on page four of your printed agenda, item nine, the consent docket. We have scheduled presentations for items BN and CF. And is there anything else the council member wishes to pull out for separate vote or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll start in order, and we'll go to BN.
Thank you, Mayor. Joanna McSpadden is going to introduce this item. I thought she was going to. I know we've got Chad Claiborne here with Okana. Joanna will give a quick intro on this, and then we'll let Chad talk about the project.
I don't think her mic is on.
Quick overview on the Okana project. So I'm going to give you a little history. So back in November of 2018, the downtown MAPS project plan was amended by the city council to include the FAM site with an additional stated principal action to implement major commercial development supporting the FAM. We created TIFs 14, TIFF A, and TIFF B. Today, we're going to talk about an allocation from TIFs 14 and A. TIFF B will be enacted later when we have development in that area. So the allocation you have today for introduction, and it'll be heard for consideration at the next meeting, is an allocation of $102,200,000 from both districts 14 and A. TIFF 14 is the sales tax district. TIFF A is the ad valorem district. The proposal is a pay-in-pay-out concept with no funding upfront and no debt from the city. We're proposing 100% of the actual ad valorem taxes paid on the property, estimated to be $67.5 million over the life of that TIFF, and 90% of the 2% general fund portion of sales tax, up to a maximum of $34.7 million over the life of that TIFF. And I'm going to have Chad Claiborne with the nation come up and give a presentation over the project. We'd be happy to answer questions afterward, too.
Thank you, Joanna, and thank y'all for letting me present to you the Okana Project Resort Indoor Water Park next to the First Americans Museum, which is why we're here today. This is development. The Chickasaw Nation feels will help support the museum, both from a financial viability amenities to the guests of the museum as well as to drive additional traffic to the museum. I'll run through quite a few of the slides. Some of them are imagery so you can get an idea of the look and feel of the development as we proceed. I'll spend most of the time talking about the financials. But the development consists of 404 key hotel, 11-story, some meeting space, a family entertainment center, as well as 100,000-square-foot indoor water park. We'll have four and a half acres of outdoor programming around water features. Additionally, we'll have a 25,000-square-foot First Americans Retail Gallery to help support what the museum is doing on that front, as well as we'll have 36,000 square feet of third-party rented RD&amp;E or retail dining and entertainment space. The development outside of the commercial development will also have a ferry landing and an amphitheater. These are supported through an FTA grant and then also through some MAPS funding. This is an aerial view you can see of the development. We have everyone coming in through a new entry, going around and through the museum, hotel drop-off area, and we'll proceed until we get to the financials, the team. This is a very team-focused on this type of market. The developers are purely water park resort-type development, and so a lot of experience in this area. And then now focusing on the financials. As far as the planning of it, we would like to start the groundbreaking in the August-September timeframe and then plan to open in Q2 of 2024, be our ideal timeline, assuming no issues from all the pandemic supply constraints. As far as some of the issues with the site, a lot of, if everyone is familiar, this used to be an oilfield site. Pretty drastic difference what you see today versus what it was years in the past. We're having to bring in a significant amount of fill material to bring it out of the floodplain, as well as provide some structured parking and then the contribution that we made to the museum as part of the transaction for the land. We are still working to do some title work to clean up some significant easement issues in that area. So a lot of things to get the site developed ready. Some history on this type of development. This is a greenfield development, so high risk. And we'll talk about the financial returns projected from this development. $342 million is the estimated cost and then proposed capital sources as we continue to work through that. As you can tell, the development is constrained from a financial return perspective. Without the TIFF, it would be projected to create 6.7% rate of return according to the feasibility studies provided, which is significantly below kind of an 11% threshold for this greenfield-type development. This project would not be viable at all without the TIFF, which you can see the TIFF does help lift us to an 8.2%, which is still approximately 30% below kind of a standard rate of return for this high-risk type development. But as talked about earlier, the Chickasaw Nation wants to see this development happen as a support to the First Americans Museum and as we continue our partnerships in the Oklahoma City area. And this is where we're talking about the rates of return. This is specific information on the projections from the TIFF, with 50% coming from the ad valorem, which is only generated, obviously, if we were to build the structures. We have $34 million coming from projections of the sales tax portion of the city, and then we'll be looking to pair that with the Leverage Act with the state. One thing I would like to bring attention to is while it is $102 million, $102.2 million, that is over 25 years. To compare it to the $342 million, the areas on the far right show that this provides approximately 10% of the development cost, and then if we are able to achieve the Leverage Act, an additional 4%. So that's the approximate support for day-one spending. This is very important, in my opinion, to show that we are projecting to bring 500,000 visitors to the site. That is substantial support to drive throughput to the museum, and 53% is projected to come from out-of-state with the additional benefit with a significant amount of population coming from Tulsa and the rural markets here in Oklahoma to Oklahoma City County. Would like to open it up to provide any question and answers that you may have.
I have a couple of questions. I know in one of our briefings, we discussed the school district that's surrounded by this area, and there is a large area of the school district, whereas both of these TIFs, both TIFs, TIFF A and TIFF B sit within it. And I'm still trying to understand why this particular school district is not included as either a project area or where those conversations stopped and why we are unable to start that conversation again to ensure that this school district that is included where you all are is a part of what this opportunity can bring for not just the community, for this particular community as we wanted to do for our city and for our state.
Yeah, so TIFF A and TIFF 14 both do overlap the Crooked Oak School District. TIFF A, which is the ad valorem district, actually has a provision that allows for 50% of the increment generated from non-directly funded projects. So any spin-off development that occurs within that district, within the Crooked Oak District, the school district will receive 50% of that increment just like they would if the TIFF didn't exist. So there is a provision for them to receive additional funding from any spin-off development that would occur after the--
And that would be for all the taxing jurisdictions in the area, right?
Yes, yes, for all the taxing jurisdictions, specifically for Crooked Oak schools. TIFF B is not currently being proposed to be enacted yet, but TIFF B also has that same provision. So when we're ready to enact that one or we have development in that area, it has the same provision for the 50% share.
I guess the confusion and the concern for me is when we were asking that question, it seemed like today it was answered very plainly, but there was a difficulty when even I'm looking at the writing that was sent, and that's not how that is explained. So I would like to make sure and ensure that we have that particular school district at the table as we continue to have these conversations in the growth of this particular development.
Yeah, so the school district is a member of the TIFF Review Committee, and they were there when the project was heard at the TIFF Review Committee.
And we'll definitely keep them at the table as we go forward.
And will be there as any other projects come before us.
That's the most important part to me as far as, again, how this overlaps in this particular school district to ensure, again, that they are also being a part of what is taking place.
And then to build on that, and I mentioned it in our briefing as well, I would, I don't, what word, verb? Caution this council and subsequent council members that as future developments do take place in that area, you call them kind of spin-off developments, right? We need to be very cognizant of any of those developments that come to council requesting sort of, what would you call it? Like to be excused, basically, from paying into the tax base there? Because if developments do that, then we're not going to be able to--
Yeah, so developments will have to pay the tax. The question would be if they get an incentive or not, any incentives or not. So they will be required to pay the tax if they're there, you know, unless it's a non-tax entity. But if it's a private entity, they'd be required to pay the tax as they go forward. The only thing we could have is if they request an incentive, and if the decision is made with the, you know, working with the TIFF committee as well as with the council to incentivize another project, that would not be split with the taxing jurisdiction. So that's one that's indirect. So if it's direct, it doesn't get split, and that's where it receives an incentive. Those that don't receive an incentive and they just develop around that, that would be that 50-50 split.
And I'm glad you clarified that for all of us because that would be my concern for everyone going forward as a council is as anyone comes to us in the future asking for incentives, just keep in mind what Craig just said. I think that's going to be something to take in consideration. And my hope would be eventually that Eastern, from Crooked Oak to FAM and all of this, just becomes better shaded and better walkable for those students. I mean, I'm just dreading summer. I'm not one of these, "Ooh, here comes summer" kind of people because so much of our city is so spread out, and we walk across asphalt without shade, and I just think it's brutal. But the proximity of this school to this development gives so much potential for these kids to learn in their own backyard so much of our history. So I would just really encourage us as we are redeveloping this area that we really think about that connectivity thread right there and find maybe, I just think it would really be worth everyone's time to try and find ways to better, maybe it's the private sector, whatever, but trying to make that stretch there more walkable just as MAPS is going to do what we can with the Reno part of it. So just something to keep in mind.
And that's to your point. That was something that we were also talking about in this project as the developers, we talked through to make sure that we had, like, public transportation included in this as well as that walkability that you're talking about for the residents as well as those students who want to connect to this space and, quite frankly, the public transportation need from visitors pertaining to where right now they have to probably travel from the hub to go to these same areas as well.
I just want to say, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I want to thank you for going ahead with this project as I look at developers across the United States that are delaying projects, canceling projects. When I look at a piece of property that had abandoned oil wells, environmental issues, title issues, easement issues, for you to go forward with this project and take 30% below the standard rate of return is a great thing for the city, and we're very proud of this project. Thank you.
Mark, I share those sentiments. Can I just ask for some clarification? So you're anticipating roughly $67 million of funds from property ad valorem taxes. Now, is that over a 25-year period?
Yes, sir.
So you're providing all the costs upfront and then hope to get reimbursed back over a 25-year period? And how much are you incurring just in terms of the cleanup costs to get the property in order? Was it 30-some million, about half of that?
Yes, there we go. So on this, you know, we have to, there's already an entry road to the museum, so we have to relocate that, relocate utilities. We have about 200, it says 230, but we've had to increase that to about 250,000 yards of fill material to get it out of a floodplain. And all of that cost is about $34 million. And we had the $14 million contribution to the museum, which is not part of the $342 million number, by the way, and then structured parking because of the site constraints that was required to make the site viable.
Yeah, and anyone familiar with this particular part of the city recognizes how challenged that area is. Historically, we saw the main business over there was a trucking company having their facility there. There is just, is no interest. This is going to be a boom to that part of the city, and I think everyone is going to benefit tremendously because without this, there would be no economic development in that area, none. So thank you for taking on this project, and I wish you good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I echo all the positive sentiments. We're very excited for this project and grateful for the continuing partnership with the Chickasaw Nation. Okay, so the only other presentation on the consent docket was CF?
Yes, and this relates to Styles Park and is associated with the Convergence Development. So Melinda's going to give an opening, and then Mark Beffer with Convergence will talk about the project.
Thank you. Good morning. Melinda McMillan Miller, Director of Oklahoma City Parks. This project began when, of course, many years now in the making with the MAPS projects for the Innovation District. And one of the pieces involved in this is the Style Circle Park, which was the first Oklahoma City park donated to the city in 1901. This project, though, with the development, the full development of the Innovation District includes taking Style Circle Park and working with BT Development and Mark Beffer to take the park and reparse it, if you would, and extend the park features further into the development. So the Parks Commission heard the item at their commission meeting just here in Land of April and agreed to convey the property to Mr. Beffer for his development to occur. In exchange for that, there are three easement tracks that are permanent park easements. That will include two green spaces within the development as well as the Style Circle, where the Beacon of Hope sculpture is currently located. The city will retain the ownership of the Beacon of Hope and that 11-foot diameter circle. Also with this agreement is a perpetual maintenance contract that the development will then maintain the park easement tracks as well as the Beacon of Hope circle. And if there, Mark is also here to help explain kind of the Convergence project that includes the park easements themselves. You should be able to click forward with your notes.
Thank you for your time. I promise I won't bore you. You guys have seen some of these documents when we talked about Innovation Hall. Just to refresh your memory, here is the site, and here is how the site lays on, or here how the buildings lay on the particular site. So getting right into it, there is the current Styles Park. If you're not familiar with the actual layout of the current park, the interesting thing about Styles Park, it is Oklahoma City's first park, and we want to continue to honor that. It is anchored by the Beacon of Hope, which we'll continue to maintain as the centerpiece of our particular development. The park in itself is surrounded by streets and really unusable at this point and has a very limited access. So here is the ultimate final design. As you can see, we really have, Styles Park will be centered by the Beacon of Hope. It will have two distinct different areas, the one on the left-hand side, the one up the northwest corner of the particular site. In the northwest corner will actually be an amphitheater, open air available for all patrons, as well as the site down at the bottom will encompass the Beacon of Hope as well as a nice lawn area. And it will be walkable from multiple points throughout the entire site and around all of Innovation Hall. And we are naming our hotel called the Styles to honor also Styles Park. I'm just going to go through a few pictures. You can see we've labeled their Innovation Hall. So you can see it's right at the front door of Innovation Hall. And actually, this is actually looking north. The Styles Park was actually put on the east side of our development because the idea is for Styles Park to really be integral to the entire Innovation District. You can, this is all part of the lower park area. And then we get to the open amphitheater. You can see with stones and landscaping around it, connectivity. It is handicapped accessible. And it's actually right in between the OSU Discovery and our Convergence facilities. So our commitment to you, we will, the city will retain the ownership of Beacon of Hope. There will be a permanent easement for Styles Park. We are going to improve Styles Park with $1.1 million of improvements. The name will remain Styles Park. And we will permanently maintain Styles Park as part of our development. And we will manage the park consistent with City Park guidelines. As you'll see, this is just a quick project timeline. Innovation Hall was approved for us to build that in January this year. Hopefully, you guys will approve what's before you today. We do plan to break ground in June with a grand opening in May of 2024. Open for any questions.
Any questions? Thanks, Mark.
I do have some questions. I'm, I think I'm a bit confused because when I spoke with my Parks Commissioner about this item, she had communicated that there was quite a bit of discussion on this item at the Parks Commission and that their, that the discussion ultimately was that they really wanted to recommend that the city retain ownership of the land and not just do the easement. I tried to, it doesn't look like we recorded those meetings, so I wasn't able to go look and actually watch it. So I'm curious, Melinda, if you can fill us in on what that discussion was.
Sure, yes, there was a great deal of discussion, you know, that we took probably over, almost an hour probably, of discussion between all the different options. And there's the history and the work that we have been doing with Mr. Beffer and his team about all the different possibilities that maybe could be done with Style Circle Park. And really, it did come down to, at the end, that this was the best method moving forward to still retain a park in that area and not lose Styles Park completely from our roster. So this was when we came down to all the different discussions, all the different options. This was the best option at the time that the Park Commission agreed to.
But that it was that we will sell it? Because that's not what was communicated, okay?
Yes, the property is conveyed to BT Development for their development, for the Styles Park easements as well as the new Styles Park park segments.
And then my other question is why we would be skipping the three, waiving the requirement essentially for the three public meetings scheduled for these types of approvals? That just kind of feels a little not transparent from my perspective.
Yeah, so the developer had requested that. They're trying to move the project ahead. They've got a lot of issues around the financing and I can let Mark talk about that. The financing and the cost of the project to try to help us move this ahead. It did have another meeting that went to Parks Commission, so it had that public meeting and then coming to this meeting. There's not anything in statute that requires this or a resolution that was approved several years ago. And so with this, we're just waiving this so we can help advance the project and move the project along.
Well, it's not only a financing issue, but it's also building cost materials.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They continue to go up daily.
Yeah, absolutely. We just went through our cost on this and our, our budget right now is $15 million over original budget, plus interest rates are climbing daily.
Well, I have, and he and Mr. Beffer and I have been through this a few times with this park sitting within the ward that I serve and the oldest park in our city. I have a huge problem with us selling this property, with our city as far as not having that under our purview. So that is how I felt. He knows how I feel about that and I have been very vocal about that because I do not agree with the process. And I've said that from the beginning of this project and the things that have happened with Innovation District as well pertaining to the residents and the people that have to live and work within that area. So again, this, this is not the route that I asked for pertaining to this particular piece of property. Again, because of, of its history and its belonging to our city. And now we have to make these concessions because of a developer and a development. So I personally, again, I don't agree with that. And that's just where I feel about it.
I'd like to say a few words. Of, of all the developers that the city has been involved with over the years, and this goes back 20 years, Mr. Bedford has my complete confidence. He's done an excellent job. He never attempts to benefit himself at the expense of the city or anybody else. He's always been extremely fair and I welcome his commitment and efforts with respect to this. I was doing some research this week on the city of Dublin and the change in that city over the past 20 years has drawn the wrath of all the other major European countries just because it's been so successful in its economic, economic development. And that's resulted from a strong public-private partnership. They are the envy of all of Europe at this point, from a financial, innovation, all the important perspectives. Dublin really has figured it out. I think partnerships with individuals like Mr. Bedford and, and the others involved with this will do the same for the city of Oklahoma City. We will look back in 10 years and see with pride as to a very, very successful Innovation District. And I want to compliment him and thank Mr. Bedford for his work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond.
And let me follow up with that and say, to the point of development, we have talked and we have built, built rapport. So I'm not insulting you as a developer. What I have an issue with, again, when we look at Innovation Districts and where they are placed historically, they are placed in certain communities, whereas we're now backtracking to reckon with those places.
To Washington.
And to be sure to, and to be sure to make sure that we are working with all of those residents and the people that live within it. So again, I have no doubt of the work that you're going to do because we've already talked about ways that we can include the community in what you're doing. However, when it comes to what this project as far as Innovation District with the community in this particular area of our community, there has to be more transparency in this process. There has to be more ownership as far as our city to make sure that happens. And there has to be more commitments to make sure that our community is engaged in that conversation. So that's, those are the things that I'm looking at as I look at all of these projects as a whole pertaining to the Innovation District. So again, I have no doubt what you can do. I just don't like how this has had to come to where now we have to do this thing in order for this project to succeed.
May I ask, since we're selling, in, in so many respects, the park, what, what will that mean for public access to this space? Like, in its entirety and comparable to current public access to our existing parks, for instance?
Sure. It's actually will be, my, my hope is it's 24-hour access. And, and I will make it 24-hour access if you will let me. But I have to manage this per City Park guidelines and there may be some restrictions. So this is at the entrance of our development, fronting on A Street. It will not be closed. It will not be barricaded off. It will be walkable 24 hours a day.
And it's a, it's a permanent easement that goes with this, which basically they'll have the ownership of it, but will have, it guarantees public access permanently on that site as well as they agree to maintain that area, develop it first, but then maintain it permanently.
Yeah, the great thing is we get the, the maintenance thrown in with this.
Yeah, so in essence, you do have ownership of this through an easement without the right to maintain it, or obligation to maintain it.
I'm sorry, Mark. And part of that, so since they have to follow park rules, so currently park, parks are open to the public from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. For park curfews are from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And so we will work with Mr. Beffer to see if we need to change that or modify that because this will be a very special park, a new, whole new special use.
How do we, I hear about, I hear the easement language, but how do we codify Mr. Bedford's hope in language? Like, I'm guessing we're gonna have to, you know what I mean?
I, I think that part of it, as far as the hope, I think was just a matter of it being 24 hours a day. And I think that's something we work out with our, because it's our regulations that set that. And so I think we worked that out with them on an exception that we grant or how we approach that. Basically, otherwise, it's maintained exactly like any other park, which is kind of how it is right now. Like technically, it's closed according to our park hours. It's not that we're going out there and chasing people off of it, but no one's accessing it at this point.
And the codification of, again, I just, I don't ever want us living in the film Robocop. I don't, I, I, one of my greatest fears, just truly greatest fears, you talk about public-private partnerships, but my greatest fear is that everything just becomes privatized and then the access of the public to things becomes diminished. And so that's, I'm not saying that's what's happening here. I'm just saying, and that's not some paranoid fear, by the way. That's like, those are examples that exist. So how do we make sure that the public knows it has access, future council knows it has access to this park, our first park?
Yes, and some of that is through easement language itself.
Okay.
That, that permanent public park easement.
It's actually in the real estate agreement.
That's how it's written in the reservation.
It is, absolutely.
That's all I'm asking. I just never want to see a kid run off from that park because they were there, unless they were doing something, you know.
Are you, are you, you done?
I'm good.
Okay, sorry. I would like for us to vote on this separately. And one of the things that I do want to mention, as this Parks Commission minutes, meeting minutes have been pulled up, that my, my Parks Commissioner voted nay to this, this move pertaining on April the 20th. So I would like to vote separately on this.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions on the side? We have one resident who signed up to speak and then maybe perhaps we can handle the vote on it. Michael Washington.
Well, well, ladies and gentlemen, this wonderful illustrious horseshoe that I love coming back whenever I get an opportunity to. Now, I feel somewhat slightly out of place because I was here at the last moment of, or heard or turned Innovation District. Now then, in proceeding of that, resolution declaring a surplus for park purposes, approximately 1.06 acres of parkland known as Styles Circle Park. If I'm getting this correctly, and again, mind you, I've just gotten here, so kind of, might be kind of a little shady. Now then, this presentation was obviously designed to come in and I guess take over this section of land here, I believe that currently belongs to the city and citizens. And then y'all, some of y'all had concerns about what kind of access the public would no longer have that they have access to now. You know, again, I'm, I kind of doubt real quickly because I'm real intelligent. Now then, now then, I haven't had much opportunity to discuss this with anyone. And I feel slightly slighted that I wasn't talked to before here, being the community activist that I am. Will let that go this time. Having said that, and especially when it deals with this so-called Innovation District that we know the chamber of Congress is promoting pushing, I don't know if I'm gonna allow that to happen or not. That's right. Y'all heard how I said. Now, sir, convergence? Well, now, convergence, well, that means converge. That means to come upon something. Converge, I like the, I like the name of that. Let's converge together. Let's connect, right? Well, I'm saying to you, I'm not going for it until I've had a better understanding of what's going on around here. Now, I see there are gonna be some other meetings and I will then turn. I'm tired of y'all coming over thinking that y'all just moved me out, my community, and just give me a slight section left of African-American community. I have a right to walk on every street and I'm not talking about y'all getting ready to try to put up some jaded communities and all this whole crazy stuff around here. I'm gonna come into each one because I have entitlement to before this Innovation District came about. You people are understanding of the fact that you want to come back older and take over something on the east side that you left in the 60s. In other words, you kind of blighted it for this moment to come about. And I know what Ernie Newell done and you did too. You're a number of the extension of it.
Thirty seconds.
Whoop-de-doo. Thank you, man. Thirty seconds, I always jump when I'm up here. But anyhow, I'm serious, we're gonna have some more discussions and I will be back. I want you people to sit down, convergence, whoever you are. Y'all talk to me. Now, thank you very much for your time and efforts. Let me salute you while I step down and yield this podium.
Thank you. Okay, does somebody want to make a motion on this item?
No.
And so this would be item CF 1 and 2. We can do that all together since we were gonna do the whole docket together. So I think we can handle that. Now, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes 6 to 2. All right, we have the rest of the consent docket now that we could take with one motion.
I did actually apologize. I did, I forgot that I was curious to hear a little bit more about item BY.
BY?
Yes.
Okay.
And CC for me, please.
Okay.
And AC, sorry.
All right, we'll take them in order. AC.
I know this is an art installation, so I was just kind of curious because I understand that there's a piece to be removed and a piece to be replaced. So I just wanted just some clarification on that, if you will.
Randy Marks with the Planning Department will help us with this.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Mr. City Manager. I'm Public Arts Project Manager. I'll wait for just a moment while we pull up this presentation. We'll explain it a little bit better. While Mark is pulling that up, I'll say that this particular project is funded by a Urban Land Institute micro grant that is administered through Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership. So Nathan Hendricks, local artist, is responsible for a number of really delightful and engaging lighting installations around the city, one of which is, another one of which is collaborative work that is also in Brektown at the Wanda Jackson Bridge. The one that you're looking at right now, so there, first of all, I want to say that the illustration where you see the lights, that is just an example of the kind of thing that will be done. That is not this actual space. It's just, but the one that will be done will look similar to this. It'll be on the south side of the Academy of Contemporary Music Building, adjacent to the canal. And this area is a covered parkway, covered walkway that is kind of dark and so this will enliven that and invite people to use that space. And then the second project is this kind of forlorn concrete bench that is along the canal in this little alcove. And what Nathan plans to do is create what he's calling an infinity bench. So you see on the right, this infinitely reflecting series of lights and mirrors, and that will be what he'll install on the bench. So either sitting on the bench and looking to either side, you'll see that, or standing in front of the bench and looking towards it, or passing by on the, on the ferry, you'll be able to see that. So those are the two, those are the two projects. And these, like I said, they're funded through DOJKC and they're no cost to the city. And so what we're asking you to do is to approve a public art installation and maintenance agreement. The artist and DOJKC will be responsible for the maintenance. And then at the time when the agreement is up, then they'll be responsible at their own expense to remove the pieces.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item BY, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yeah, I was just curious to hear a little bit more about where this is in the process and what the consultants will be producing essentially as part of this master plan development.
Right, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. So this is the first phase of starting to do the 107 parks. So this firm will put together a master plan for all the parks and, and that'll include going out and, and having public meetings and talking to stakeholders and all those, those things that, that need to happen before we start to do design on this. Remember that the resolution just says all the parks and then there's money. So we need to make sense of, of all that and that's what this firm will do. And then after they get that master plan and the budgets and everything all positioned, they'll do the first phase of this.
Thank you. So that's kind of, yeah, I was curious kind of who would be at the table as part of who they would be consulting with to create that master plan. So it does sound like there will be some engagement around neighborhoods, public meetings.
There's gonna be a lot of engagement. Yes, yes, ma'am. The neighborhoods and, and as I said, stakeholders, user groups, city staff, all that.
Okay. And when the plan is developed, will that be brought back to council and presented?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Let's all head.
And CC, Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I just, I know we're working on the services contracts. I'm just kind of curious where we are in the process of this connection and when we can expect a date of completion.
So this is the contract for engineering services. So we're just, just getting started with this to do the connections at 10th and 23rd on the Katy Trail and then to do the Air Depot Trail. I don't have the details, and I apologize, of the contract in front of me, but I'm guessing that that'll be about six months away to, to get plans out on the street, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay. Well, now we can consider the consent docket, except for the item already approved. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we have the concurrence docket, items A through I, we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we're at item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item A was previously deferred. Item B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1123 Northwest, Northwest 14th Street going from R3 to O2. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, could we just have the applicant come up and just explain what this will do?
Good morning, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. So this application would take the site from R3 to O2. If you'll look at the zoning map, you'll, you'll notice that the surrounding properties to the east and the east and west are also O2. My client bought was historically a home, but for many, many years been used as an office, and it wasn't until they were sitting at the closing table that it was brought up to him that it wasn't zoned correctly. And so this is to allow the historic use to be now properly zoned.
Okay, I will move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. 11C, ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1700 East Hefner Road going from R1 to AA. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, the purpose is to permit development of a wholesale nursery, and I understand there were no protesters present, and I will go ahead and move for approval of this application.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11D, ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 9520 Southwest 15th, going from PUD 1512 to C1. Councilwoman Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing no one signed up to speak and recommended for approval from planning, I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11E, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1125 North Council Road going from R1 to C3. Councilman Carter.
Being that we have no objections, I move for approval.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11F, this is ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval at 1704 East Britton Road going from R1 to PUD 1871. Councilwoman Nice.
All of my applications are greenery, so this is fine. I know the applicant is here. Come on up, because you may have to just answer a question or two. I know there were some TEs that we were looking at, and one was removed. Can you help me to understand what that was?
Yes, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. So there was one TE. Cindy, would you show the site plan, please? So the site plan, the TE talked about retaining the trees in the wooded area, and the tract that actually says wooded area is not part of this application, it's actually outside of the boundaries. And so what we've agreed to do through the TE is, to the greatest extent possible, keep those trees that are within tract 1. I wouldn't also note that before we moved forward to a planning commission hearing, we did have a series of meetings with the neighbors, and only after we revised the PUD language to ease some concerns, take out marijuana uses, and do a few other things, did we move forward to planning commission. So at planning commission, there was no protest, and we, Mr. Pennington was kind of involved in that process.
Okay, thank you so much for the explanation. So with that, I will go ahead and move for approval.
Motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. 11G, this is ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 10601 West Britton Road going from AA to PUD 1883. Councilman Carter.
I recommend for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item H, ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval at 12920 Piedmont Road going from AA to PUD 1885. Still with you, Councilman Carter.
Is the applicant here on this one?
No one signed up. Looks like no.
All right, I'd actually like to defer this to two weeks. I need to learn a little bit more about it, please.
Okay. All right, so we'll get a motion here to defer item H for two weeks. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11I, this is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval at 5320 Southwest 119th, going from I2 to PUD 1886. Councilwoman Young.
Mayor, if no one signed up to speak, is the applicant present? Okay.
It appears yes. Sir, the applicant for this item?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
My name is David Jones with the applicant. SDK Development.
Thank you. So I'm hesitant to approve rezoning when we're going away from the industrial zoning south of the airport there. Can you tell me a little bit more about this development?
Yeah, it will be a mixed-use development of both keeping I2 on approximately 20 plus 25 acres on the north end abutting southwest of 119th Street, and then also converting the southern portion of that approximately 65 acres with a combined additional tract from the Williamson Farm Group to the west of approximately 65 acres into 222 residential lots. So in the remaining industrial portion, there's looking at a combination of professional office space and flex space, which will be basically space for utilization in trades of various types, plumbing, mechanical, light manufacturing, and then also the potential for personal storage in that north remaining I2 25 acres.
Okay, so let me say this back to you so I make sure I caught it all. What we're going to end up with is I2 zoning just south of 119th, and then some commercial businesses or office space, and then some additional housing from Williamson Farms, and then south of what you're rezoning is still I2. So we're going to have I2 all the way around you. Is that right?
Well, to the north, you'll have I2.
Oh, north of 119th.
And to the west and to the south, yes, ma'am, you'll have I2 also remaining. So there's just a block of approximately 65 acres of the 80-plus acres that my client owns that will be converted to residential, similar to the existing Williamson Farms to the east. The reason that is, is because we lie within the Aaron Byrnes overlay district, so we have AE1 and AE2. So we're just looking at for the property that we manage and have control over and converting the AE2 element into residential for the occupancy standpoint, and then everything else to the north, to the west, and to the south of us will remain I2.
Do you own all of that property to the south of you?
That is a, currently it's a soil mining operation, and it's Midwest wrecking.
Okay.
So that will remain I2, just based upon how it's operating at this point in time and the soil materials that are being removed from there, that'll remain I2. Everything to the west of us you can kind of see is also I2, but it also resides within the 100-year flood boundary, so there will be limitations associated with its use.
Okay. I would like to defer this for two weeks. I'd like to have additional conversation.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'd like to defer this for two weeks. I want to have some more conversations with you as well as with Williamson Farms and Midwest wrecking.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on item I, and the motion is to defer it for two weeks. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item J was already deferred, which brings us to item K, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 8101 South Shields Boulevard going from C3 and I1 to SPOD 1388. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
If not.
No? If not, this was unanimously recommended by the planning council, so I would go ahead and recommend its approval.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. L is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval at 1701 through 1707 Northwest 14th, going from R2 to SPOD 1390. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yeah, the purpose of this SPOD would just be to be able to do multiple single-family homes on that stretch, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Councilman Greenwell is, he is here, yes. Reopening the vote. There we go, passes unanimously. Okay, item M, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1401 Southwest 44th, going from O2 to SPOD 1394. I'd like Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, can we have the applicant come and talk about what will be happening at this development?
David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. So this is an SPOD that would retain the current zoning as O2, but add the one use of retail. If you look at the zoning to the east, it's zone straight C3, so what we attempted to do was to be mindful of the residential that surrounds it, but add just the one single use to allow retail sales to occur there.
Okay, thank you. I will move for approval.
The motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Okay, item N, this is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval at 1844 Northwest 15th, going from R1 to SPOD 1396. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, this is another SPOD that would just allow for multiple single-family homes on one lot, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item O is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval at 3031 Northwest 19th, going from C3 to SPOD 1397. Councilwoman Hammond.
We're just doing lots of density in Ward 6 today. Similarly, this is also to permit multiple single-family homes on one lot, so I will move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item P was previously struck, which brings us to item Q. Q1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Has anyone signed up to speak? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and go to...
I'm on IQ. It's 9Q, 11Q?
This is 11Q.
Signed up for 9Q.
Is it 11Q is what you meant to sign up for? All right.
That's what I'm saying.
Come forward.
I told you I'm still asleep this morning, y'all. Now, y'all know my real interest is only known on this east side. You know what I mean? Is that the, that's the end of it? So, okay, you want to go back, well, let's go to... Okay. Where's, yeah, 2115, can I see that one? No, no. East, I think, East Kelvin? On or baited? Yeah. Uh-huh. God have mercy, really, man, I mean, how much they want for that? Good Lord, yeah, okay.
That got struck.
Go ahead, I'm just, what's, let me see what the other zone is. I don't have my... Get that in. Okay, that's good, thank you. That ain't even needing... Where's Q at?
It's probably 4206.
Okay, I see. I got it, okay. Okay, we got that one, and 2701 Northeast 21st Street, aka 2633.
And the owner of that property is behind you. You want to help him.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's Brian Center, I remember that, that's why I live in that area, okay. And I think he's getting ready to try to do something with that, so we need to wait till... I got the citizens to be here to speak on that anyway. Okay, then last one is 808 Northwest 116th Street, that's it.
I believe we've stricken that.
Oh, didn't, oh. Okay, then, well, that's all I need, and I just want to see what's going on.
I would, like, while we're on this, to understand what has happened with that property on 21st. I know a couple of weeks ago, the ask was that we continue the conversation, and I know for Dr. Phillips, he has help as far as his daughters assisting him with some of the business that they're doing, and they're out of state, so I'm just kind of curious as to where we are and what needs to be done.
Good morning. It's a great day today, because I can report to you that I signed a contract on May 2nd to secure the building, and all the steel, all the doors are now steel sheets, I guess you could call them, been welded in, so hopefully nobody tried to fall behind them. And so the only thing that, in other words, I just received a call from my nephew saying that everything had been secured as of, I know today, all right? And so that's the status of that portion of the complaint, we're working on the other as far as the roofing things go. And then I'll be discussing with Councilwoman Nice about getting that done before I come in on that, yeah, really.
Did you?
But anyway, it's...
Did you give them that information?
Say again.
Dr. Phillips, did you give Chad?
Yes, he has.
Okay.
He called, and he talked to him also, and I met with him a few minutes ago.
Okay.
So Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement, couple of things we have here, one's the dilapidated building, and I'm not sure we have a plan of action for that quite yet. We realize that's going to be a very costly endeavor, and I think he's still going to have some construction to do, or some deconstruction to do before they can actually start constructing a roof on the property, but don't have a definite plan of action or when that's going to happen at this time. The securing part of it, I did speak with Mr. Chapel probably 30 minutes ago. He's advised they secured two of the openings. They're still working on one of the openings currently. Yesterday morning, I visited the property, nothing was secured. Advised Mr. Chapel, I probably need to view that myself, that way we can determine whether or not the property is in compliance. From what I understand, they're working on it right now.
What has happened is the, all the doors have been secured except one on the north side of the building, and I was telling Chad that we need to do the one on the south side of it, so we can open up and get the equipment in there to do it, really. But anyway, they put up all the other, it is secured, but we may have to make a change on one door, really. But he called me a few minutes ago and said everything is done, but he and I get together and we'll make sure that we can still get in there and do what we need to do, because they are welded shut, they're not opening and closing.
Okay. So, okay, what I'm going to do, because we're looking at a contract, actual, physical, and you have a copy of that?
I have a con, I have a copy of the securing contract, and I have a contract for some sort of deconstruction to a portion of the building and the removal of some material. I'm not completely sure what that is with Midwest wrecking, but the securing one, I'm pretty confident that is to secure the property.
Okay. So because I'm not, I would like to figure this out and work this through because of what I know as far as when we declare our structures dilapidated, that process. I'm going to ask right now for the dilapidated... I'm going to ask right now, for the dilapidated, we give you a little, just some more time, because that's going to be a little more complicated. However, with the secured, unsecured, I'm going to give you two more weeks to do that. Because you can be able to secure that fully if you have a contract in place in the next couple of weeks, because my goal is to get it off of one of these lists, if not both.
Well, really, secure it now, he just called me a few minutes ago.
Yes, well, I, I understand that we still need to make sure, we're looking at it to make sure it's in compliance of, of being secured. Okay, so if you'll allow me, counsel will do that. I'll ask that we, just for this one, for the dilapidated, I like to defer a month, and for the unsecured, I'm going to defer that for two weeks. And in two weeks, if that is not fully secured, I'm going to have to go ahead and go through this process.
Got you.
Because I, I really want to figure out how to help you through this. But I know, at the same time, we, we still have to work through the process on our side, too. So I'm willing to, to work with you and figure, if we can get this secured, please, help me get this secured within the next two weeks. All right. Okay, so that's what I'm going to ask for right now.
All right, so we'd like to bring up a motion to defer item eleven Q one L for a month, four weeks.
Correct.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, no one else has signed up to speak under this public hearing, so we can proceed to item Q two, which is the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated, except for those that were already struck or deferred. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Eleven R one is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those that were previously struck. And I believe Councilwoman Nice, you would like to defer one of these?
Item U for two weeks, please, thank you.
I've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously, that item is deferred for two weeks. Guy Peters, here to speak about item X on this list, thirty-one thirty-six Southwest Twenty-eighth Street.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you, elected officials, for hearing me out today. I would like to preface to say, what I'm about to say is that I love living on my street. My street has a multiple of different cultures, and that makes me a more tolerant person by living among all these people and making good neighbors out of every one of these people, of my neighbors and everything. And I speak for my neighbors because, you know, they can't come here today. Because they're, they work hard, they work a lot of hours and stuff like that. And I'm fortunate to have an employer that allows me to take off today and come see you and address this issue. I come to you with personal struggle of compassion and empathy for a situation on or around the street that I deal with every day. I try not to make decisions in haste and think of, and try to think out options, but at this point, I'm out of options. And other than coming to this meeting, venting my frustrations, I am asking for your help, Chad, on this abandoned property. I would like to address the home at thirty-one thirty-six Southwest Twenty-eighth Street. I know about the Action Center, I know how to use it. I know how to research the catalog and everything in the past two years that it's been there. And then, of course, you know, we have the previous, previous database that, you know, you could go into, but it's really slow, you can't look up. So I'm, I'm addressing all the things that I've seen in the past two years. The Action Center has had over fifty cases concerning this one house. Fifty cases, high grass, people moving in, everything, people moving out. And what we have right now is, is we have a house that has become a dumpster for people bringing in carts, and then what they do is, they take this trash and they cycle through it. And then, once this, once this happens, they take other people's garbage cans and they put this trash in here. And usually, they fill it up, yes, but they have so much trash in this area to where it overfills. Now Chad called me yesterday and says, okay, we're going to have somebody come out there to address this, and we're going to have somebody out there to come clean this up. That's all nice and good, but it's only a temporary Band-Aid for what is going on. I'm a man of compassion, I've lived public service, as James King's attest to, in the past. But this is enough, God, this is enough, I'm tired of it.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
And so what I'm, what I'm here to say is, is that I want something to be addressed to this place. And I, I, you know, my neighbors, my, like I said, my neighbors work hard to this situation, and they've dealt with it more than I have. You know, I've only lived there about a year, but they've lived there for ten-plus years and stuff. And so we want, we want some resolution to this, please, please, Joe Beth, please.
Also signing up on that same item is Anna Ochoa. Okay. All right, no one else has signed up to speak?
I can't. Oh, sure. I apologize, I did not sign up for that, I was notified by my client, Bank of America, that they have a mortgage lien on this property, and what they would ask...
And you're speaking about the same property that...
Yes, sir. What they would ask is that this be deferred a month, so that they can get a preservation team down there to secure it and clean up the property.
I would like to, I'd like to leave it on this so that I know we can, we can work administratively with our staff. But guessing what it's sort of sounding like is that the previous owner passed away, is my best guess, looking at who was supposed to be notified. So I'm going to leave it on this docket and then have, if you want to follow up with our Code Enforcement, if you all are able to get it secured and abated prior to our staff taking action. But I would love to meet with the neighbors, neighborhood. I'm, I was looking at the address, I think this is, yes, an area that I think might be new. Depending, I don't know, the, the lines are weird when we, when we redistricted. But I'd love to come meet with the neighbors and kind of talk about some solutions more holistically. But it sounds like if we do have a new owner, hopefully, that can actually take some action. That will be a start, so that's where we'll leave it for now.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, that concludes everyone who's signed up to speak. And so we can proceed to the resolution found at eleven R two, declaring that the structures are unsecured, except for those previously deferred or struck. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Eleven S one is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those that were struck earlier, and we do have one person who's signed up to speak, Michael Washington. Okay. Then we can proceed to the resolution found at eleven S two, declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, we are now at item T, a resolution adopting the City of Oklahoma City Emergency Operations Plan and authorizing the city manager to implement the Emergency Operations Plan, et cetera. And I believe we have a presentation on that.
Yes, we do, Captain Audrey George is here with us to give us a quick presentation on our Emergency Operations Plan.
So, good morning, councilmembers, mayor, and city manager. My name is Audrey George, I think some of you may already know me. I've been in special events for about the past ten years. Don't worry about it. I'm excited to take on the new role as the emergency manager for the city. I am here today to present the Emergency Operations Plan. This plan was created prior to my transfer to the emergency management unit. The Emergency Operations Plan is a collaborative effort among many city departments. We have fire, police, Public Works, the Public Works liaison was not able to make it today, dispatch, utilities, the city PIO's office, all of, and that's just to name a few. So we all come together and work on the Emergency Operations Plan. It's really about the teamwork that goes on in the city on a daily basis. But when we come together, we actually document the work that each city department does. And this is really just to know their roles and responsibilities during an incident or a disaster. The EOP is about managing the city's assets and resources and ensuring that the city does not duplicate any work. So there really aren't any changes to the EOP this year from last year, but I've brought part of the team here today to answer any questions, if you do have any.
I appreciate Audrey taking over this role, I know it's a, it's a heavy role, and it's one Frank's carried for a long time, and she's stepping in, and she's got a great team there, and really trying to spread that work out among the whole team. And it really does help us to coordinate when we get ready to, you know, when we run into some type of emergency, that we have plans on how we're going to communicate, how we're going to coordinate. And I really appreciate her role in this now, and the leadership of the team in the development of the Emergency Operations Plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then we could take up the resolution. Item T, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, eleven U one is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Major Julian Guyona III, while he continues to require rehabilitation. Executive session is not requested. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. V one is a resolution authorizing Sherry Katz, Dustin Paris, and Thomas Tucker, Assistant Municipal Counselors, to represent and defend city employee Wade Gorley in the case of Champion v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Eleven W one is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorizing Collins, Zorn, and Wagner to represent city employee Greg McAllister in the case of Champion v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Eleven X one is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorizing Collins, Zorn, and Wagner to represent Michael Clicka and Chris White in the case of Hendricks v Clicka and White. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Here on Y one, a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Crestwood Vineyard Church v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Z one, a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Hitchcock and Hitchcock and others v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Double A one is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Kelly and Kelly v City of OKC. Executive session is also not requested. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Eleven A B one is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Lasky Atal v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. A C one is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of McCullough v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. A D one is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of McKee Atal v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. A E one, resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of ROK Properties v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. A F one is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the claim of Schrader and Fowler v City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Eleven A G one is a claim recommended for approval. There's only one claim, item A, and executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, we are now at item twelve, comments from counsel. As we, as we enter that, I'm going to step away, and so we'll turn it to you, councilman and vice mayor. And you, you stay right there, it's, it's... All right, fine, you're also welcome to come over here. Yes, yes, yeah, I always bring you the gavel. That's the service I provide. Okay, it's all yours, Vice Mayor.
So we'll go around, say it again. No, I think I'm fine. We're going to go around the horseshoes, it's items from counsel. We'll start with Ward three.
I'm good, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Ward five?
No, thank you.
Ward six? Ward seven?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, I just have a couple of comments. I first want to mention that we had a successful weekend with one OKC in the homecoming at East Point, as far as our elected officials that represent parts of northeast Oklahoma City that were present to talk about their accomplishments for this past year and what they look forward to for this coming year. So we're grateful that we were all there. And on Saturday, at Booker T. Washington Park, we had a great turnout. It turned, the weather turned out to be very nice, although it was very windy. But it allowed for folks to take in the developments that are happening within the, the area as well, and to see what is to come and how they can be a part of this new renaissance that's happening in northeast Oklahoma City. I also want to mention, in town, that this weekend, we had Arshay Cooper, he's the black rowist originally from the south side of Chicago, and he came to speak life into our young people. So there were hundreds of kids on Friday at the River Sport area. We had Moon, we had Cricket Oak, and we had Millwood. And when I tell you these kids had a good time, they were surfing on the machine... a good time, they were surfing on the machine, they were all over, just all over the place, learning how to row, and also hearing from Arshay Cooper speak about why it's important for our young people to be a part of sports and recreation that normally would not have included them to be a part. So, just happy that River Sport was knowledgeable to our young people, and they gave them a water bottle to allow them to take advantage of their summer camp for free, so that's really given them a great opportunity to be a part of what's happening in our community as well. So, a couple of things that are coming up that I do know about, this Saturday Edwards Park cleanup, it's gonna be with the neighborhood, it had to be rescheduled a couple times because of the ice and snow and all the things that happened earlier in the months, and Eastside Classic is gonna be next Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00, and they're gonna start at Intentional Fitness to JFK Park, so that'll be fun. And on the 14th, depending on the weather, right now we're saying it's gonna happen, we're gonna do our second annual Ward 7 Community Job and Resource Fair, so we're looking for all of those who have resources, job opportunities available to be a part, we'll be at Moses F. Miller Stadium from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., and we need a couple food trucks just to make sure we have, folks can be fed, and as far as being there and being with us on that day. And another thing that's happening is a seat at the table, and this is at Mount Triumph Baptist Church, and this is on the 21st if I'm not mistaken, but this is from 11:00 to 1:30, and this brings our physicians together with our community, for all of them to have dinner and gather, to talk about the things that are happening, and to create relationships, because we know within one particular zip code of northeast Oklahoma City, the life expectancy is 18 years less, so it starts with relationships and conversations, and this is a way for us to start, and it's a seat at the table, so very grateful for the organizations that's going to be putting that together. So, other than that, looking forward to traveling to Bremberton next week to see the decommissioning of the USS Oklahoma City, and I know with that, as we look at how that's gonna be placed, probably pieces of that and history of that in our city, looking forward to seeing how we're going to honor and acknowledge the USS Oklahoma City here. So, with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. And then just speaking from Ward 2, I just want to invite everyone this evening to a launch event at Bellisle Library, 6:30, and this is for anybody who's ever been interested in solar energy, but you're unsure where to start. The City of OKC invites you this evening where Solarize OKC, which is a coalition of local nonprofit and community advocates for safe and more affordable solar, we invite our residents to an in-person and livestreamed event to learn more about our campaign to bring more solar power to Oklahoma City. Special guest speakers and community coalition members will discuss the benefits of solar, how to solarize, how the Solarize OKC program works, and introduce the selected solar installer. We'll also review group discounted pricing, reveal featured state-of-the-art clean energy equipment, and be there to answer any questions you might have. I'm really excited about this event because, as Councilman Stonecifer keeps mentioning, with the rising costs that are going up during this era of inflation, anything we can do to bring our residents' costs down, particularly when it comes to energy, is good, and this is a way tapping into solar energy, so, and of course, it's good for not only our people, the economy, but our environment. And with that, I would move to Item 13, which is our citizens to be heard, and first we have Paulette Legg, is that correct? Thank you, Paulette, and if you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Paulette Legg, clergy. I live at 1918 Northeast 44th Street. I think everything is so muffled, I can hardly hear really well in here, but I think you asked me for my name and my address. Was there anything else I need to provide?
Nope, just three minutes are your time. Thank you.
I must digress once more from introducing myself to you, as I become acquainted with each of you individually, according to your bios, and as a collective body by your votes. I have to digress because the last time I stood before you, I rejoiced over the seating, nomination, acceptance, and seating of our honorable Judge Canady Brown Jackson. Unbeknownst to me, probably, I'm sure at the very hour of my rejoicing, there was condescension, ugly, hateful, ignorant biases already in operation against that wonderful God blessing to us earthbound entities. I held back tears, not of sorrow for her, but tears of realization that this is our time, this is where we are, this is who we are, this is what we are, as I listened to barrage after barrage of her character. Such indignation, you see, I don't have a point of reference for in my life entirely. You wouldn't know that I haven't finished introducing myself to you, but I will get back to that. It seems that there's so many other urgencies that happens on a daily basis, that I must get this out to some body of leadership in the very place that I'm in.
30 seconds remaining.
My time is expired, as you say. But I will get to all the things I'm appointed to say to you, but I'm out of time today. Blessings, he who have ears to hear needs to hear, a message is being sent to us, and I'm to give it to you directly about the deeds you do in your positions.
Thank you, Paulette. Next, we have Michael Washington, who has signed up to speak.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, with them three ones, zip code in it. Well, now, let me, as I conclude this wonderful adventurous morning, here it is, because I have other things to do, let me say quickly that I have been recently involved in a situation where a young black man was brutally murdered in Norman, Oklahoma, meant simply just jogging in the street. He got into it with a motorist, who in turn, I'm told, they got into an argument, and the motorist, well, I felt my life was threatened, so I just pop, pop, popped him. But now that isn't according to the statutes under Title 21, Section 12, 98.2, I believe it is, not exactly at this moment, but I'm sure I know what my point is, I'm saying to you that that was a very unfortunate situation, and it opens the door for black people to be slaughtered, black people in minorities to be slaughtered by a district attorney who's saying, oh, that was standing my ground law, it matched. The kind of information in our public statute, but that's not the fact at all, because the statute states clearly that a person must be attacked, okay? Arguing with you is not attacked. Now, maybe reaching for your car during opening it, or punching you through a door, but then again, the statute also says, let us use meat force with force, okay? It's not enough for interpretation, the words share well and must accompanies that statement they're in. So I'm telling you, these wicked officials, and these district attorney's offices and others, need a quick rude awakening, because they are in here violating the rights of the citizens to be heard and protected. And I for one was called by the family and loved it, but you better believe Michael Washington put on a show everywhere he goes, and you better believe my point was clearly made now then. Let me regress back to down here to Oklahoma City, just for brief, I don't have much time, let me get to it quickly. This body here has signed a contract with the county officials to house arrestees in that dilapidated, scary, frightening jail. You people cannot turn your heads because you're allowing your people to be placed in a county jail, okay, with a contract, so that means if something is not appropriately being done, then you have a duty to investigate it and rework that contract to add that, hey, our prisoners, our detainees will be respected and given a constitutional setting while they're locked in.
30 seconds, please.
The bedboards are still there, the showers are still terrible, plumbing is bad, no access to response time as far as medical treatment, Dublin and triple celling is still not have been amended, and there are a lot of other things, as we say, that's not, is out of control, but let me say, because I got 30 seconds, man, y'all need to visit that, because it's very serious, people are still dying, and that fentanyl drug is still being so prevalently walked through them doors. So let's look at this, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we also have Guy Peters, who has signed up to speak. Thank you, and if you wouldn't mind stating your first and last name and your place of residence, and then you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Guy Peters, 3117 Southwest 28th Street. If you would have asked me about five years ago, I was ready to pack my bags up and leave this city, but I've seen some great things happen to this city which kept me here, and which made me invest in a house and consider my life, rest of my life here. Outside of my district, James, I'd like to thank you for your Bellisle, the Bellisle Library, it's beautiful, it's absolutely beautiful. The Solarize Project, I, I'm very much interested, but damn, I'm going to the Who concert tonight, so I'll be enjoying that, but I have expressed my interest in going there. Nikki, your hard work in northeast Oklahoma City where I grew up in, it's beautiful, I see great things happening in that, and I want to publicly go on record and say, keep up the good work. Now, my elected official, Joe Beth, I'm kind of agreeing on you and everything, I look forward to get to know you a little bit better concerning the issues of my area and everything. So after I spoke first time and everything, I, I get the feeling that you're going to see us soon, and I hope so, and address these issues that are a concern to me and my neighbors. Concerning the police budget that we have, we have talked about and everything, one of the biggest things about the Band-Aid that we talked about, you know, clean up the house and everything like that, like I said, I'm a person of compassion, but the people that filter in and out through there and everything need help. And if you've ever had an issue with addiction, an issue of dependencies and stuff like that, sometimes those dependencies are tough to get rid of. I've seen people in that situation. And so that CIT program, I'm all for it, man. I'm all for citizens, unarmed citizens, to be a part of that, and I knew that if I was well-qualified for that area-
30 seconds, please.
-I'd be a part of it, too. So I want to encourage each one of the wards, people around this area, to really consider, consider mental health as a priority to where we're at, because we got 60 minutes, talked about mental health of children, and we have the mental health, the homeless that we need to address, and so I think it's important that you guys understand that mental health is important right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes Item 13, citizens to be heard, and then we have Item 14, is that right? Which is adjournment?
That's right.
And I get to do the-
You get to do it.
It's an honor, everybody, we are adjourned.
Good job.